To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up next, we have roll call. Please share that all council members are present today. We have the review of the minutes from the March 6, 2024, and March 11, 2024, regular meetings, and the March 27, 2024, budget workshop. Any questions, comments, or concerns from council? No. Hearing none proceeding forward. We have Main Street update today from Chairman Bolinger.
I don't think I can see over top of that. I struggled with coming up with a way to share with you guys our first Main Street official update. I think it's going to be a non-traditional way that I talk about it, and I wanted to talk about it by talking about the evolution of where we are as a board. And I think I can tell you the things we're doing while I talk about the evolution of it. And I think it kind of shows where we're starting and where we're going. I think it's really important to note that we've got, we've got good support within our board. I had, I heard from almost every board member we have prior to this meeting tonight. And, you know, and they were saying, well, it concerns me that they say, "Good luck." Good luck is always ominous. But the idea is that they supported our, our ideas coming before this council. And we've got members in the audience tonight that were here to show their support, and we've got people showing up to all of our meetings. So, good things are happening. So, bear with me while I run through these. It's a little bit lengthy just because it's the first one. So, I want you to know that we have a board of driven individuals, and we're complicated, and we're unpaid, and we're willing to make sacrifices to see success. And to be honest, it's a scary group of people to get together because none of us is ever willing to give up on something that we believe in. So, Stephanie Stevenson is one of our chairs, and she started, um, started recently in an article by saying that "We start and build businesses here. We build our families here. We are very involved in our community." And I think that says a lot about our board because that is every board member that we have. It's not just one of us, it's all of us. And it's, it's a force. It's a force. So, Board Evolution says, "Start where you are." And it took me some time to realize we're not all at the same place. And to effectively lead our group of people, I needed to find a way to help each member succeed where they currently were instead of where someone else thought that they should be. So, where are we? We're progressing. We're definitely moving forward. Some of our committees are in the first stage, which is founding. We need support to form effective forward progress and gain confidence with the roles that we're trying to fulfill. It's disorganized, and it's messy, and it's normal. So, that's okay that some of the things we're trying to do are there. It can be frustrating, but I trust that the passion and the experience that each of our members of this board bring to the table is worth the outcomes that we're expecting from it. As a group, every committee has experienced success in Stage Two, which is the organization phase, where we have seen documentation of processes, goals, financial requests, and that includes new action request forms for tracking and accountability, as well as movement towards being able to adopt updated bylaws that have taken care of areas that weren't previously acknowledged or ever even addressed. So, it's taken us some time to get there, but I think with the city now having the attorney reinstated, we've, we can have some forward progress with those bylaws. And, you know, not to, not to say it hasn't taken us some time to get there. We, we've made suggestions and changes, and we, you know, it took us a while to agree to some of those things. So, Stage Three is, I, you know, the wording of this one's interesting. It's the double-hatter. So, this is where we live most of the time, and it means that you wear dual hats. Everybody is not only doing one thing. And that's, that's an interesting thing to think about because we're performing more than one role at a time. We have the experience of city staff to support us, which is a key vital piece of this, you know, this, this stage. And we talk about the recruitment of volunteers, although most of the work that we're doing is still being completed by members and small committees that we have in place. So, there's not, you know, we don't have a ton of that outside influence yet, and we certainly are looking forward to it because it takes off some of the stress and that workload. So, the organization of events that are beneficial to the Main Street may not always be feasible. So, we've begun to operate in a way that looks outside of the box towards our community, for example. As we've brought up in past meetings, and again in the Emmitsburg News, which was an interesting thing. Understandably, it's difficult for our committees, such as our Clean and Green Committee, with limited volunteers, to commit to a regular timeline of events outside of the larger-scale community cleanups. However, this committee, to show you how we are adapting to these things, is looking forward to implementing different types of events in place of those regular cleanup dates. So, other things are happening. It will be happening. Some of them are pending on financing from grants and funding, and some of those, the city will be able to, you know, they'll be able to back so that they can take place immediately. So, we can look forward to business volunteers participating in some smaller-scale regular activities specific to Main Street. For example, this committee does not have to bear the brunt of all of that workload. It could be that the first week of the month in front of your own business, you go out and clean it up. So, we've got some boots on the ground and some committees that are in place that are going around and talking to businesses and coming up with ideas like this so that we don't look at our one committee and say, "Here's your job." Well, that's not just their job. It's our job as a community to make sure that we're getting out there and that everybody in this room is really involved in these things, and it's not just simply a small committee of people that is dedicating their, you know, volunteerism time. You know, and everybody else just has to do nothing to make the town great. It really takes, takes a village. So, I've taken a step back recently and thought about it, and I realized at our last meeting, we didn't have a set calendar of events, but we can still be helping each other achieve our goals that we each feel attainable within our committees. So, we have the ability to pass the torch to another member when we're in the double-hatter because we all wear dual hats. And when it's fitting, we can pass this torch, and then you don't believe that someone has given up or fought against an idea or dismissed a good idea. We can simply say, "I don't have time for that right now." And that's okay because these committees are not large. So, we're just now learning that we can work on this. And that was hard to figure out how to put into words because we have a really valuable board. And it's still valuable even when we don't agree or we get stuck in different phases. So, that was, that helped me understand kind of where we were and where each person was, you know, believed that they were. So, now, Stage Four is being transitional. Our promotions committee really thrives here. They ask frequently, "What are each of you doing? What is working? What is not working? Why do we do that? What is the perception of this to our Main Street and our community?" So, no one survives the wrath of the questions of this committee. They are, they are good questions, and the answers aren't always clear, and they're not always easy, and they're not always what we like. But it's never once stopped them from moving forward and asking those questions to try to direct our board to achieve the goals of each of their committees, even if it's painstakingly one agenda item at a time. So, they, uh, this committee's also been integral in keeping Main Street businesses connected with each other recently. So, Paul Cluth is regularly, he has ambassadors. He regularly has boots on the ground, and it's really refreshing to see businesses interacting with other businesses that way. And a lot of times, it's on behalf of that specific committee that he's coming in and he's saying, "Hey, what do you think?" Or, "What can we do?" Or, "Let me bounce an idea off of you." So, that's really, it's nice to interact with our neighbors that way. And I, and to be honest, I wish there was more of that, more and more and more of that. So, this committee is looking forward to the council to work on third-party communication codes for the city so that there's more standard access to publishing information in real time and within guidelines. I know that's been brought up before, and that will also alleviate some of the burden on our city manager. So, right now, that's a lot of, a lot of that falls back on him, and that could be something that, as this council's able to help us work one policy for those communications, that other members of our board who are capable of doing those things and deserve the opportunity to do those things will have the ability, with the council's blessing, to do those things. Most recently, this group has guided the team to create a financial strategy that's both new to Main Street from years past and more transparent and accessible. They've had, there have been disagreements about the nature of funding and budgets in this board. That is, that is nothing that's hidden and nothing that I would tell you is surprising. But we can and will do better. The Community Foundation of Carroll County holds funding for Main Street. Those records are not always consistent, but they have been, or they have been requested, and they'll be presented to our board when they, they're made available to our Main Street manager. Sometimes that takes a little bit longer, so some of that is our learning curve when, in what timeframe to request those documents from the Community Foundation to get them to our board in a timely fashion, which is something we struggle with and is something we're working on. Stage Six. Here's my favorite, and it's the last one. It's our visions. I lied to you. I missed a page. I did. I did. I think I missed it in time. Where I stapled it out of order. I did something. I don't know. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I just didn't even print that page. All right, I'm going with it. Our visions. I think this was it. So, as the chair, I see the possibilities to connect each of my committees to one another. So, I look at the outlying groups. I look at forward progress. I look at commons, events, and goals. We have collaboration with our police department, our parks and rec, our civic groups. Those are all things that are actively happening. Promotions can see that our Main Street can have a cohesive look and message that's related to the community, so they have opportunities to attend events, participate when they want to be involved, and share ideas when they have new ideas for ways to participate during events that really would have otherwise had nothing to do with them. So, if there's a Main Street event, you may find that you have a small business not on Main Street, but if you know people are out and about in town that day, you could do something that, that doesn't necessarily have to be part of that event to, to help benefit you and boost another business or bring your children out or give you, give you a reason to be involved in your town. Organization. They know the financial and volunteer structure is going to help our ideas thrive, so that's really what they're working on and beginning to do now. Design is without a committee or chair, but there's crossover among our groups, again with the, the double-hattered standard, that we are doing things like spring flower baskets, planning for winter decorations ahead of time for cost savings. Those things are being worked on constantly, and they're not simply forgotten because we don't have that chair. Other people are stepping up and they're doing it. And I do enjoy receiving text messages that are like, "Look at these Christmas decorations we just found." And it's March. So, those are, those are fun, and I think it's neat that people are thinking ahead and they're looking forward to things like that. It shows that there are things worth doing. Arts and entertainment really breathes life into our Main Street with events. They're getting ready to do the upcoming Sidewalk Chalk Saturdays. That's new. That's not been done here. Small Business Saturday, many, many more social gatherings, really bonding our neighbors together. So, doing things that, you know, not being blind to the things that we have in our community or things that people can afford or not afford. We don't want it to be about money. We don't want it to be about, um, always businesses. We, we want it to be about Main Street. So, we want to see people out and enjoying their Main Street and all the different ways that we know they can enjoy Main Street, whether, you know, whether it's supporting a business, whether it's attending an event, whether it's coming out to get something to eat. These are all different ways that, you know, Arts and Entertainment is looking at, what can they do to get people out into the street, which then, I think, will filter out into those other places. Economic Vitality is our newest-led committee. They're working on improvement of Main Street properties. So, seeing value where together renovations can take place. They're replacing, looking at replacing aging canopies, business signs, things that add appeal, and vacancies that can be not only addressed but minimized. So, they're really, they're really doing good work for being the newest committee that we have people working on. Cleaning Green is our visionary for deliberate design. This is the phrase that I probably like the best because they see and remind us that everything can be done with a purpose. So, this committee, for example, says, "Do you slow down when you drive through Main Street?" This committee is dedicated to giving you a reason to do just that. They are infiltrating with art, finding ways to make your experience walking around Main Street more enjoyable, pedestrian safety measures, and they're really, you know, at the heart of it, they're really investing in protecting the community that we love. They, they are probably the, my, my favorite visionary one because of the purpose that they bring to the table. So, it's important that I speak on behalf of our board to tell you that we're not perfect, but we're at every meeting. We're working towards making our town better in our own ways. The support and transparency of this council is a crucial piece of our puzzle so that we're able to work together as a board without any distrust. And I implore you to make sure that if your actions involve, from this council, Main Street, that you come to our meetings and you tell us so that as a group, we can continue to grow as leaders and we can work on these issues together. Sometimes what we find is that we find out about meetings or things that have been talked about on the back end, and there are things maybe our board hasn't had a chance to discuss together. And I think we really want to take those opportunities to do that. We want to see you guys at our public meeting. We want the public at our public meetings. We want to know what people are interested in and what you're thinking. Jim, we want to make sure you know what new businesses are coming to town with Economic Vitality. We really, we don't want to leave you guys in the dark even a little bit. We want you to be as excited about these projects as we are. And sometimes I think my watching your council workshop meetings and then taking that back to my board, which is the way that we do it now, sometimes isn't even just enough. We want to hear what you have to say as individuals and residents and business owners of Main Street, too. So, that's what I have for my committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can you remind me when your meetings are?
We have ours. Ours is the last, is it the last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday.
Yeah, the last Wednesday of the month is when we do ours because we try to do them strategically, so it's right before.
Thank you.
Are you guys still doing for the eighth?
Yes, we are rescheduled. As of right now, we have enough people. Our last meeting had to be rescheduled. So, our next one is on Monday, the eighth, at 9:00 AM, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. So, I know that was a lot, but do you guys have any questions for me?
What time was it again in the morning?
Nine o'clock.
Nine?
Yeah.
At City Hall?
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Any more questions, comments, concerns for council?
I have a couple of quick questions and one fairly large one. I know you, you say you're, you're looking at the, the bylaws and trying to redress some of the inconsistencies that are in there. Do you plan on doing that coming forward with your next meeting, or what's your, what's the plan on that?
We've got, we've got two things that we've talked about with that one, whether we feel that we need a completely separate meeting to do that, or we have also requested input from each of our members and received it so that we can put all of those things into one cohesive document and/or trackable, trackable document so that everybody can see what everybody's new pieces are to it, and then we can discuss it at a meeting in a shorter period of time.
Yeah. I think you might be, you might find you're probably better off to, if you can arrange it, you know, and everybody's busy, but I think you might find you're better off if you can concentrate on that and that alone on a meeting, I think, might do, might do you well. Just my opinion.
I'm unsure. That'll be the, that's not me. That's the board. Our board, our board will decide what they want to do there, so we'll, we'll ask them.
The, um, you talked about reaching out. Have you, have you talked about Main Street as a committee reaching out and working with the Chamber of Commerce and Alliance Club as two of the, the two largest, you, you, social business organizations?
Our civic groups, right.
Civic groups in town. I thought that was the word I was looking for. Couldn't find. So, are you, you know, going to be reaching out to them, trying to involve, involve them in, uh, trying to get the, the people and the word out?
The shortest answer is yes. So, Beth Lee is our organization committee, and she has underneath of her roles volunteers and volunteerism. So, she has those civic groups under her scope, and her committee is newly working as of January. So, I know that is something that's in her purview, that she is interested in working out to them and using some of the contacts that other board members have to be able to reach out to them in an appropriate way so we can see what really, the biggest thing we struggled with so far is what falls into Main Street purview and what falls into community purview outside of Main Street because we are a Main Street advisory board. We are not a Tawny Town advisory board. So, I think you are on the right track, absolutely, that we have things that are very Main Street dedicated. And then we have, how can we utilize the support of these other civic groups like the Chamber and the Lions and the Fire Department? And how can we reach out to people and events outside of what may be happening on our Main Street?
Okay. I know you mentioned there was still some discussion regarding the, the financial history and, and how we get to where we are and what the funding is and what it looks like. And I understand your difficulties with the Community Foundation. Believe me, I, I have seen that in action, so I understand what that is. But I urge you to, to, um, get that information out and get it clear so that everybody on, on that committee understands because that way I don't continue to have to hear the earfuls that I occasionally hear from people in my home, if you know what I mean.
Yep, and I was actually discussing with one of my, um, committee partners, Stephanie, right before this meeting. It was, you know, that was a big piece. It comes up a lot at our meetings, and I think it's important. And we've kind of, we've kind of given out conflicting information on it depending on who's answering the question and on what day. So, we've taken some time between Jay Meche and Jim Wepract and I, and we've taken some extra hours out of our lives to sit down with one another to say, "Hey, what can we do to alleviate some of this frustration? How can we make sure we're best helping this board?" And those community action, or what do we call it? The action request form. I think it was the action request form, is, everything's got to have an official name, right? So, that was ours. Um, we're going to have these forms, and they're in, they're in process, if not complete, right now. So, at the next meeting that we have with you guys, that is something we absolutely would love to share. But it was not appropriate to do so yet because our board has not seen them. But that gives us the opportunity to request funds and it be documented in a way that is consistent and clear. And it gives us a way to show if we're going to fund something or not fund something, when that was funded, not funded, or even why it was funded or not funded so that going forward, we can either make changes or move on. So, those things are in progress already because we too identified that that seemed to be a pretty consistent area of conflict. And it's one that, that we can move forward from, as was coming up with the financial paperwork because that has not always been something that Main Street did or had access in, in years previous to our current city manager. So, we kind of said to him, "Hey, let's, let's dump all this in your lap and see what you come up with in a, in a, in a couple of months." And I don't know that that was fair either because we never asked that first crucial question, which is, "Where are you? Where are you starting?" And the answer was, "From nothing."
Exactly, and that's, I, that's the, unfortunately, the issue is, you know, dating back, you know, uh, to the previous Economic Development Director. We had, you know, there were, there were questions and issues about money and where it came from and where it went. And, you know, although no one has ever raised anything to the state level to say, "Hey, you know, uh, what do we, you know, where did this money go? Or, what was this money spent on? Was this done, you know, correctly?" But it, the, the fog of not knowing creates suspicion, and so it's the openness that we're looking for there.
Yep, and that's absolutely in the, that is, that is within, yeah, that is within the scope of what we, we agree with you. And we, we believed that same thing, and I think everybody on our committee felt the same way. And just nobody had a good plan for how to get past it. So, that's where these action forums came from. That was something where we said, "Hey, you know what? We can figure out how to get past this." And we can do that because accountability is, it's such a big deal, especially when you're talking about money and when you're talking about sometimes large sums of money in different committees. So, it'll, it'll actually be very good information to have, I think, for a lot of people.
No, I, I, I hundred percent agree. The one last thing is the Restore 2.0 project, or Project Restore 2.0 grant funding. Reading ahead in my packet, the Economic Development Director says he applied, past tense, for the grants, as grants are through the Main Street organization. They're going to be funneled as block grants from the state to the Main Street organizations. And my question is, uh, who decided that? Where did that, did that ever come before the committee in terms of what, how much grant money for which projects, to whom? How was, what, how was that decided?
That has not come before our committee, so that, that I cannot speak on because that's not.
That's fine. I, I kind of didn't think so, but I wanted to raise it.
Yeah, that's out, yeah, that's been outside the scope of our committee so far.
All right. Thank you.
I know Meche has, um, talked to me about that last month, and it was really kind of uncertain about what direction he was heading. He named a few opportunities. Perhaps he's formulated that a little better so that he can share it with us and with Main Street, but we'll be meeting this week, I think.
Yeah. Well, my, my point, though, is that it's, um, that money is, is being, is supposed to be distributed to and by, uh, Main Street programs. And if the Main Street program has not, you know, if the committee has not seen any of this information, how we apply for a grant.
I think the issue was that we didn't have a formulated plan.
I think there's more to be talked about there.
It was my last understanding. If I take off my Main Street chair hat and put off my, you know, and put on my business owner hat, that, that Restore Grant was looking at properties that were vacant and were vacant up, up until and during the submission of the grants from the city.
That's correct. And very few actually qualify for that.
Right. Um, and then I know it was that it kind of falls into our, if we were going to put that into Main Street purview, I would tell you our Economic Vitality Committee would have been the ones. And again, that committee is, is our newest committee that we were talking about, and I don't know that that would have been a feasible place to start with that either without him having more background or a, or a functional committee.
If we had been a little bit more rolling along at a functional standpoint, I could see where that would be.
Right. I, I, yeah, I feel like his, his place would have been to probably list the vacancies that were available within Main Street, and that's probably where our committee would have placed that because then there's some overlap there with the city where we go from what is our Main Street manager doing to what is our Economic Development Director doing. Um, and we've really, I, I try very hard because I've had positions like that that I've held. I try really hard to keep those two positions separate because they're performing to very different functions at the time that they're doing them.
Further questions, comments, concerns from council?
Thank you for that report. It, um, tells me we've got a lot to look forward to.
I think so.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have council member statements regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Any council members? Hearing none proceeding forward. Public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment pertaining to non-agenda items?
Hello. Good evening. I'm Kenyatta Brooks, 111 F. Seaking Court. And I have my son here with me today to help me with my time. And he is at 202 Morningfall Street in Tawny Town. His name is Joseph Brooks II. I'm going to start by, um, first asking everyone to have a open heart and understand that we're all here as a team to work together. And it's like teeth and tongue fall out, but they got to stay in the same mouth. So, I'm a mem, uh, not a member, but a citizen of Tawny Town, and I want to piggyback on my email that was sent out and my request last month. And in the email, I asked if, what can what can, I asked three questions. The date of the policy where we cannot ask questions, a copy of the policy, which I did get about a week later. But the last question that has not been answered is, I asked in the meeting and in the email, what can the citizens of Tawny Town do to ensure proper questions and answers segment during this workshop? I haven't had that answered as of yet. I do understand that I was told before I would get my answer via email or by the next meeting. I do have the resolution from, that was made in 2018 in reference to members not being able to, residents not being able to ask questions publicly. I think that should be reconsidered. You know, I know there's not much we can do about it, but you guys work for the community. You guys are supposed to be here to make us a safe and a peaceful environment for all of us. And I just want to be able to have that reciprocated. So I did do some studying, and I've been studying some things about the council and where we should be, about powers and things like that. And it's really not vague, it's very clear, that it says that basically you work for the people. I don't feel that we're working for the people, because we can't even ask a question. I mean, publicly. It's like everything has to be going through, has to go through all these different channels to get a question asked. If I ask you a question, Ms. Fuller, and you say, I don't have the answer to it, you could always email me. The answer can always be contact the mayor. So I'm wanting, I'm here today asking, for the second month in a row, how can we, as citizens of Tawny Town, ask questions publicly without having to go through all the channels of emails and waiting a week or two to get a response, or in this case, a whole month or two to get a response? And it's a question I'm asking. I guess you're not going to answer it. So what I'm going to do here is, I have some definitions that I like to share with the council in reference to where we should be. It talks about your general powers. It talks about the council shall have the power to pass such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution and the laws of the State of Maryland or the Charter as it may deem necessary, for the good government of the city, for the protection and preservation of the city's property, rights and privileges, for the preservation of peace and good order, for securing persons and property from violence, danger and destruction, and for the protection and promotion for the health, safety, comfort, convenience, welfare and happiness, happiness of the residents of the city and visitors. So every month, we have no city people here. Nobody from Tawny Town comes out. And I can tell you personally, because we feel shut out. We don't feel like we're a village. We don't feel like we're a, that you guys are representing us. We feel that you're representing the council, or the mayor, or however you want to do it, the city. Or Claire was kind enough to return my email. Thank you, Claire, by the way, for giving me that information. But I'm still here at a fog as to where do we stand with being able to ask questions to our council and our city officials. Thank you. Also, since I get no answer there, I'd like to know where we are with doing something for the kids of Tawny Town. I understand that we do have parks and libraries and all that stuff, but what else do we have for the kids of Tawny Town? I'm standing here with my son, who is a Tawny Town homegrown, born and raised, been here 20 years. And I'd like him to say a few things in reference to what it was like growing up as a kid. I didn't get a time, a chance to meet with the police chief or the folks over at the police department. And I hate to put this out there, but, you know, a lot of our kids here are gone. They're passed on. Because they've overdosed? Yes, they have. This is real stuff that's happening in this town. And we don't talk about it. We need to provide safe places for these kids to go. They don't feel comfortable. Some of the silly things that we do, like making ordinance sense about this is an English-speaking city. I mean, these things are not encompassing to who we are as a body of the city of Tawny Town. We want Tawny Town to be a small place, but it's too late for that. We're big now. We got all these houses. We get all of this stuff going on now. We're no longer small. We're the new Tawny Town. So what do we have for the new Tawny Town, is what I'd like to know. And I looked up some definitions of council. It talked about taking public comments and questions at city meetings publicly, writing grants to earn money or secure resources for city projects, brainstorming together so that we don't have to go into deficit, representing the community and constituents, doing meetings to represent us as Tawny Town. I could go on and on and on. And the very important thing that I see here is attentive listeners, working with the citizens, allowing questions to be asked, and leadership. And I'm going to let my son take the floor from here. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Kenyatta.
Hello. Ashley mentioned, my name is Joseph Brooks II. I've been here my entire life. And to really see this city develop into a place where I feel like now I can't even come home during 3:00 PM without running into like the most traffic ever versus, you know, driving the streets. And sometimes the town is just empty. Like before, all these new neighborhoods were built and stuff, it just goes to show like the development of how many more people are moving here. Aside from what it was like growing up, I'm just going to speak about like what it is now, and how I feel like with there being so many more people here, we're, or not, not me, but you guys are really focusing on getting people in here, building all these new houses. There's so much more traffic coming into town. Things are just a little bit more trafficked, a little bit more complicated. There's a lot more people in Food Line. There's a lot more people in Kenny's, McDonald's, whatever you want to, whichever place you want to, you know, pick and choose from. There's like overly stimulating amount of people in each place. And I feel like there's not enough public places, or restaurants, or hangout spots, or anything to support all these new people that are moving in here from all these different places. And I guess they're more so content with maybe the prices of the housing, or how much housing there is to provide, or how safe it is here, or schooling systems, whatever reason people have for moving here. I feel like that's why they moved here. But coming here and actually being here and living here, it just kind of sucks having to drive to Westminster for every little thing that I need. And it's not far. It's like 20 minutes away. It's not that bad. But I just feel like there should be something I can go to down the street to get what I need. For example, a place like Staples. We don't have anything like that. Fast food, I'm not really into fast food like that, but all we got is what? McDonald's, Subway. Like, that's really all. I really get tired of eating the same thing over and over again. And it's like, when I go to other places, I love to travel. So I went to California like five times last year, and I didn't know what to, I was eating at Chick-fil-A. Like, there's so many different cultures and cuisines that you guys, I feel like, need to hone in on in regards to even being able to satisfy these new people moving into town. Because there's a lot of Caribbean's. I will say that. And I don't think they want to eat McDonald's all day. As far as hangout spots go, I'm not going to lie, growing up here was super duper hard. Like, coming from somebody who's literally been here their whole life, as well as being a person of color, I can say that this town is probably the least comfortable I could have ever been, growing up, as far as being an outsider, feeling like an outsider goes. Now, there's obviously dangerous places. I used to stay in Baltimore City. I went to school in Baltimore City. And I'm not saying that place would have been any safer for me. But definitely here, I felt threatened everywhere I went, whether it be the grocery store, whether it be walking down the street, whether it be going to the carnivals, where they are very, you know, prideful, where they sell Confederate flags, where they just do things like that. And I feel like that's another thing that's really not okay with this place. There are still, and I don't know if I'm correct, but I'm pretty sure, isn't the Confederate flag, it's like, you can't, it's a banned thing, right?
No, it's not.
It's not?
It's free speech.
Look, well, then we need, I don't know. I don't know. I just, and it's like, it just goes to support that a lot of these hangout places that are claimed, provided for these children or teenagers of the town, aren't for everybody. The carnival is not for everybody. Even my little sister going now, I feel like actually the kids now, obviously there's a lot more black people moving in, so there's a lot less tolerance for any BS. But when I was growing up, it was probably like a 1 to 10 ratio. And I'm not being over dramatic at all. I just wish, I'm glad now that my sister's growing up in a better Tawny Town than I did, because I'm definitely pleased with what I'm seeing happening. I don't know if I'm correct, but I'm pretty sure you guys are building some kind of community center or something like, am I correct about that, or no?
Not yet.
Not yet. Well, thinking about it?
It's on my mind.
Okay, yeah. Well, then, look, that's a step in the right direction, because McDonald's is not a place to hang out. The skate park is not a place to hang out. Robert's Mill is not a place to hang out. And a lot of these parents take their kids to these parks to go to the park. Now, just kids, I guess nowadays, 14, 15, 16 years old, are dibbling, dabbling in drugs. So when they do go to these places to hang out, they are smoking around kids, they're being aggressive, they're cussing, they're using vulgar language. And they're kind of all forced to be in the same vicinity, because there's Memorial Park, there's Robert's Mill, there's like a mini, a mini park near my house. But like, me personally, I'm not going to, hey, say, hey, do you want to like go to the park and hang out? We have a bowling alley, but it's like, I don't want to bowl every day either. It's the same thing with like eating McDonald's every day. So that's really all. I just, I needed to be a safe space, especially for my sister. Growing up now, me as an older brother, I feel like should not have to pick up phone calls from my little sister saying that people are harassing her McDonald's, people are harassing her at the park, people are harassing her here. They're doing this, they're doing that, and calling me to kind of come and save the day. I can't really save the day. I can't put my hands on anybody. I can't yell at somebody's child, because there will be repercussions for that. But I feel like there's no repercussion. On the other hand, on the other side, when these things are happening, nobody's doing anything about it. Growing up, like I said, if you want to fight somewhere, you can go somewhere and fight. Nobody's going to stop you. There's nobody really even there to say anything. And all the kids are kind of with it, so everybody's either going to be recording, laughing, something like that. Like, there's no structure to any of the community. And hanging out, or kids riding their bikes, there's so many kids here who ride their bikes, do skateboards, whatever they want to do, in the street. I feel like the skate park is really, it is tiny, I'm not going to lie. It's a smaller skate park. I feel like that could be added on too. So it could be like a bigger area. The skate park parking lot is bigger than the park in the actual skate park, like combined. There's like 30 parking spaces there for like nobody. Nobody ever parks there. I never see cars there. Like, it's all, if I park there, I'm by myself. So just with that, I think more consideration should be taken into establishing some kind of community center, or some kind of place that kids can go and hang out without a junkie from wherever harassing them. Because there are a lot of people here with drug problems, I'm not going to lie, and they do interfere in a lot of these kids' hangout sessions. And I've seen it before. I've seen people passed out in McDonald's, just sleeping on the thing, waking up and harassing people, harassing kids. And they're not getting kicked out for some reason. I don't know why you can go in McDonald's and, as a very unkempt man, some, someone who obviously, you know, has issues and sleep, or just stay there. And if that's the case, if so many people here are homeless or need that attention, there should be a rehabilitation center here for these people to get help, not just trying to bash them, because they need help too. But they shouldn't be traumatizing little kids. And that's really all I had to say. So thank you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you.
May I comment, just a couple of quick comments, just regarding that. One of the things that is difficult here in Tawny Town is the demographics. And that, by that, I mean, the town is only so big. And we're surrounded by larger towns with more things. And from a business standpoint, it does not make sense to locate in Tawny Town, which is a smaller area than the surrounding areas. You know, for example, Walmart, which is a terrible example, but there are six Walmarts within 20 miles of right here. Six of them. So we'll never see a Walmart here in Tawny Town, because there are already six Walmarts. So that's kind of, kind of the theory around that, is that these things already exist in other places, and we don't have the center of gravity of a population to draw those things into town.
And a lot, you know, I don't want to interrupt you, but a lot of the fast food places and chains like that won't come here, because we don't have the demographics. So it's not that we don't want it, or that we're not pushing for it. They won't come here.
Nobody, at all?
Yeah.
You have to have a certain amount of population.
A certain amount of population, and we don't have it. We're nowhere near.
Not even with the new neighborhood?
No. We're nowhere near. We're nowhere near Westminster, or a Hanover, or a, we're just nowhere near. And they're just not going to do it.
Well, we have McDonald's and Subway, even small businesses.
You have some of those.
They'll put two McDonald's across the street from each other if they think they can sell it. They'll put two McDonald's across the street from each other if they think it'll make money.
It just depends on the company.
Right. You know, because I've talked to restaurant owners about trying to locate here in town, and they tell us for their concept, they need at least 50,000 people within X radius. And we simply don't have it. So, while I understand what you're looking for, I'm not sure that that's going to be forthcoming. You know, I will say, in regard to question and answers, to answer your question, I would agree that there ought to be some forum for question and answer. I'm not sure if this is the forum for that, because the experience of this city has in the past been that those things have devolved into unpleasantries, and which is how we got to where we are. So I don't believe that, even though we've asked about it, we started out asking about it last summer, that there is appetite on the council to change that. And as far as your experiences at the carnival and feeling like an outsider, I feel for you. And I'm sorry that you felt that way. And I'm sorry that that happened to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always come and say your piece.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for.
Any more public comment pertaining to non-agenda items?
This is my business owner.
Since the door is open.
It is, it's fast, and it's my business owner hat. I want to talk about money. So we want to give away money. So we have baller gunsmithing right on Main Street. We own some other properties that are in forward motion right now, that we hope to have exciting news on very, very soon. But what we really want to do is, I am a professional fundraiser, first and foremost. That's what I did as a career prior to, you know, running this gun store and these other properties. And I have a passion for raising money and giving away money to organizations that need it. So when we talk about safety and helping these different groups, things we're hearing from our own community, these are things that we have an interest in through our store. And I think other businesses, not only on Main Street, but our entire community also have an interest in. I talked to Jim a little bit about this earlier, and I, you know, I had a whole plan on when, when was the right time to say this. And I was like, you know, there's no real reason to wait for it, because it's a good thing. It's not something that we should have to put off and really tiptoe around. It's my underst- off and really tiptoe around. Um, it's my understanding that council or parts of council may have some hesitation with us raising money as a gun store, and then being able to work together with other departments or parts of the city to be able to distribute some of those funds that are raised, because of the way they're being raised. So, I guess what I wanna say to you and ask you is, what are your concerns? Because I know that those concerns are there, so I wanna make sure that we're talking about them, and we're being public and honest and open and transparent about them, because I assure you, we're running a very legal operation, and that I am licensed by the city, and the state, and the federal government, and then I have extra federal licenses on top of those, and there's a lot of regulation in my world. Um, and it's something that, when we're talking about fundraising, to give you an idea of the numbers that we're looking at, we raised around $200,000 last year, just through our store. There's other businesses in our town that are also raising money and giving money to worthy organizations and charities. Um, there's a lot of money coming into this town that people are trying to do good things with, and we are no different. So, I wanna make sure that that's something that we're able to do moving forward, and I don't want there to be hesitation about it. Um, Carroll County is very much a sanctuary city, um, when, or sanctuary county, when it comes to how they feel about firearms, so I don't want there to be hesitation there, that it gives Tonys Town a bad rap, or a bad name, or it makes the perception of who we are something, something bad. I would tell you that I feel like our store is actually, even though it's firearms related, that we're a very family oriented store. We have people that have been bringing their children to us since they were tiny, and those same kids are now coming in to be responsible firearm owners. They come in for education, they come in when they have questions, they come in when they need nothing at all, they come in when they want ice cream, and sometimes when they just need a friend, or when they wanna show us the new dog that they have. That's the kind of stores that are in your town, it's not a scary store where people are not welcome. Um, we have people that are prohibited from owning firearms that come in our store, and you know what we do? We help them. We either help them work through that, or we give them alternatives, or help guide them, to keep them out of trouble. So, the gun store is really an interesting thing. Um, so I feel like when I get feedback that maybe there's some hesitation here, I really would like to know what it is, so that I can help dispel some of that, because we just got our, uh, got back from the accountant, and it was $40,000 that we gave from the gun store last year, in addition to working with the other organizations and the other money, an additional $40,000 that we gave to Union Bridge, and Rocky Ridge, and the Litchell Foundation in Brunswick, and all of these other places that we've been able to send this money to, and to be really, really honest, we want a chunk of that money to stay home. We want that money to be in this town. We wanna put it towards our own programs, towards providing CPR training for kids and safety in our community, so that more adults and children have CPR certifications, so that we can help fund the police departments, up and coming K-9 division, um, you know, we've really got some passionate projects here, and some things that I think we can really, really help the town with. Um, and there's nothing that I can see in city code that would prevent those things. So, I don't want it to be the opinion of this council that those things shouldn't happen, when I, when I feel like we can be doing good, and that I don't think that perception at all, I don't, I don't think you, feeling like you supporting our store is a bad thing. We're just another Main Street business, we're no, we're no different than the bakery, we're no different than the pottery place when the pottery store was here, we're no different than Laughing Coffin, we're the same mom and pop store that we've been, that we came to town 15 years ago as.
One comment that I'd like to make. First, I, I celebrate your business, I'm so glad you're here, you've made us so proud, I can remember when I cut the ribbon on your grand opening.
I have the picture on our refrigerator.
And, and it, it's, it's, it's a very much an asset to our town, proud of it. Where I have a short, where it short circuits with me, is that a private business raising funds for a municipal government, that's, I don't think I like that. I mean, what, I would like, support you 100%, if you wanna do a raffle for the American Legion, or the Lions Club, or, or some church organization, Carroll County Sunday, or something like, Food Sunday, or something like that, I'm all for that, and I think you should do it, and we should, we should, we should keep it right here in Tonys Town, Carrying and Sharing Ministries, any of those, uh, organizations that help the community at large, 100% behind it. But, I don't think that, that, I think we're, 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 we're kind of crossing the, a fine line when we have one, a, a business raising funds for a particular department or division or entity in municipal government, and that, and that's, that's where my feelings lie. But, there may be other ways around that, there may be other ways to think about that. Maybe, may even, maybe even Main Street would be alright. But, uh, that, that would be something we have, we'd really have to talk about, and that's, that doesn't have anything to do with the fact that you would raffle all for guns, that, that's not even entering my, not even enter into it. I'd buy a ticket, so, I've been, that's, that's, but that's just where I'm staying, I come from on that, my opinion, just my opinion.
I mean, it's, it's not uncommon for drug dogs and police departments to be fundraised, it's, businesses have done it before. When we talk about where the city government gets its money, uh, the city government raises money from the people and the businesses, it just doesn't magically create money. Um, so the idea that, you know, we shouldn't raise money from businesses, well, that's how we already raised money, I don't know why that would be a conflict. Um, but if there is legal issues with it, I could see that as being a potential issue, but if there isn't, I have no hesitancy with it. I see no, I see no reason why we couldn't, as long as there isn't any legal issues.
Yeah, it was my understanding that there's nothing in the city code that would prevent any business.
I, I think we're looking higher than city code, I think we're looking state federal.
Jay, are you?
But it's something I think he was already gonna be looking into.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you on the line, Jay?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have any, uh, words, any quick words, wisdom on it?
Uh, we certainly can look into this, you know, I was told about it this morning, I think, uh, yesterday. The, the issue is not the acceptance of funds, it might be the fact that, uh, we may not be a typical nonprofit, meaning that when you give things to the city, it may not be a tax deductible donation to the city. Uh, some people do that, there's issues with that that have to be looked into. So, um, and of course, it would all be in the, the wording of how you do it. If somebody said, hey, I wanna give the city $100, um, we probably would take it. Um, but, I would imagine it was, if the city is doing the fundraising, and so it was unclear to me, uh, because the details were, were pretty light, that came to me, it was unclear, is, is the city involved in this, or is it just gonna be the alternate recipient? But, I'd like to look into the tax issues, uh, would be the biggest thing.
Okay.
That, that's my comment, so.
Right, and, and our, um, I anticipate it to be, again, I've done fundraising for a long time, so some of this stuff I can, you know, I can speak to. Um, but, it would be the city, whatever that department would be, and that could vary, and it could change, or it could always be the same, it really would not, you know, it would not matter, the idea is to be helping. Um, so the city would be the recipient of, it would not be a collaborative fundraising effort between any one department and/or the city entity and the gun store to be fundraising. They would just simply be the beneficiary of, so that we can tell people, again, transparency, where their money's going. So, if we say, you know, for example, we do fundraising for Westminster City K-9, we wrote them a fantastic check today, so that, you know, they could, they could really buy things for their K-9s that their city budget otherwise would not allow, and expenses that we know that they're going to have. So, we'd like to be able to do the same thing here, where there's different departments, and again, those things could, could change, and, you know, the city could say, hey, we really, you know, this really works, and we have this need for this, and as long as it falls in line with the mission of things that, you know, safety, proactive safety is really where our mission lies, with a lot of the stuff we do. So, as long as it falls within that mission, I, you know, we'd like to see the city be the beneficiary of some of that for their programs.
Fair enough. Jim, I had a quick question for you. How do we do the donations for benches at the park and trees at the park, for instance, the plaques?
Right.
Now, I mean, if, if it's gonna put you on the spot, it's not a big deal.
I know for the police department, we have a donations general ledger.
That's what I thought.
Line. I don't know if we have the same line for the Parks and Rec Department, but I would imagine it's the same sort of thing.
Okay.
Again, I think it's an important question for all the businesses in town, because there's a lot of people that I think wanna give, I know ours is a little touchier, um, just because of the nature of what our business is, but, like I said, that's why I wanted to make sure that wasn't, that's not where our hangup is, because that's, you know, I just feel that we're, we're no different than.
No.
Any other business doing it.
And that's what I, it doesn't look like, the gun aspect is the hangup here.
Yeah, and it's something that really, fundraising in town really doesn't come up at these meetings very often, it's something that's, you know, it's not every day that people are like, hey, we're trying to give you money.
Right, but I didn't, but then I'd hate to see it like be not legally done. That's for me where it like gets sticky, like, I just wanna make sure that, like, we can accept your fun.
Right, being able to accept it the right way.
I'd hate to see you do all that work, and then it not, then it be for nothing.
And I, I don't care if it's guns or chocolate chip cookies, as a representative of the corporation that is the city, I would hate to think that we're asking somebody to, you know, hold a bake sale so that the police department can get a dog. Um, I, I, we should be funding that anyway, and that's, that's, I think, I think is where.
And, and there are, and you will.
And, and where you're talking, when you were talking about Main Street, which is actually, that would be, uh, a better, I, to me, that would be a better direction of that, because that is a 501(c)(3) umbrellaed organization, uh, and there would be no question there. Um, I just, I, like I said, I'm just not, I, I don't think we should be asking residents to hold fundraisers, to do something we should be doing on our own.
I mean, again, we've seen the canine aspect and the fundraising has happened at other departments before, and there's a reason for it, it isn't just to raise the money, some of it's community building, I mean, that's really what it is.
And we can talk about it, I have no problem having the discussion, I just, it, my first blush on it, which was, my response to Jim was, shouldn't we be doing this anyway, why should we be asking somebody to raise funds for us?
I think maybe we need more detail.
I think we need to.
Yeah, and sometimes it's, um, especially with K-9s, just because this is where some of my, um, some of what I know. There are funds that are budgeted for, and then there are unbudgeted items. So, you may find that the police department has budgeted for absolutely every single thing, and guess what, your canine just ate through 17 toys, because they just didn't hold up to that kind of canine. So now, all of a sudden, your canine's bored, so now he's gonna eat his bed, then he's gonna tear his house up, because he didn't have toys. So, stuff like this, it's, it's really meant to be the filler for items that the city hasn't thought of ahead of time, to be able to budget for, to really kinda cover some of that stuff, or to, you know, cover, there was just a program that covered bulletproof vests for friends of ours out of state, for his canine, and it wasn't something the department thought that they would have money for yet, and the fundraising was able to get the dog his bulletproof vest ahead of time, so now he's protected, and it just happened ahead of schedule. So, things like that, just think of proactively how to move forward with some of this fundraising that I think businesses are willing, able, and capable of doing. Um, but getting, just starting the discussion.
Yeah.
You know, starting the discussion with you guys, on what we can do, and like, you know, that said, how do we, how do we make sure that the city is able to accept those funds? I know those donation accounts exist, so I know donations are able to be given. Um, so maybe seeing what that interaction looks like between the businesses on Main Street and on, you know, in the entire community, how it looks between the two, so that we can start getting some of these things happening, um, and funding things that we didn't even know we, we had a need for yet.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick on Parks and Rec, we do have, um, Budget Line 4396 for donations on, under revenue on parks also.
Yeah. It's just popped into my mind, because I know we were looking at the plaques that they were doing out there. Any more public comment pertaining to non agenda items?
Hearing none, proceeding down, resolution ordinances and agreements. Uh, first, we have ordinance 01-2024, fiscal year 2024-2025, operating budget. Questions, comments, concerns by council.
Um, anybody else wanna go first?
No, go ahead.
I still wanna have that conversation about the, um, sorry, I'm trying to get back up to my thing, uh, the 6% across the board, you know, it was in Jim's, um, update. Um, I think we have two employees who received monies above and beyond this year, for various reasons, so I think we should discuss whether or not it's, it makes sense to offer them even more above and beyond with this budget process, just for this year.
I think you're talking about specific individuals, that is more of a personnel thing, I think that needs to be, that should be discussed separately, not, not.
That's fine, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah. No, I understand completely, and I, I'm not saying I disagree, I'm just saying I don't know that that's a discussion we should have, uh, in open session, just because it involves personnel matters.
Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Does that mean closed session then? Is that what you're asking for? You kinda left that open.
Well, I mean, if, if, if you, if, if you wanna press forward about an issue, that's a personnel issue, and when you're talking about something that's specific to two people, that kind of drives it as a personnel issue, then yes, and that's where we're headed, I, you know.
I think you made it a very personnel issue last time, when you spoke about making sure that the 6% is going to the loyal employees at the last meeting. Hey, guys.
I'm, I think you're totally taking that out of context, and if we're gonna have a discussion, then we can do it in closed session.
So, I'm, I'd like to ask the city attorney to weigh in on this one, because if we're talking about finance and the budget, that should be public. If we're talking about a specific employee or performance or something like that, then we're talking closed session. So, I think what we're, we're kinda teetering on which, which it's going to be, because, you know, on the one hand, we're talking about city finances, and that needs to be open, um, you know, but, obviously, there is concern about a couple individual positions, and that discussion could lead into personnel territory.
And, you know, the, um, idea of, uh, an automatic merit increase on top of a promotion is something that really doesn't sit well with me just generally, so it really doesn't pertain to an individual, but there ought to be some mechanism in our, um, way of dealing with personnel, that if a person gets promoted, there ought to be a certain time or a certain period before a merit increase would kick in, maybe at the yearly anniversary or something like that. I don't think that, you know, just, uh, promoting and then piling a, another increase right on it, right on top of it, regardless of who it is or what position it is, makes a lot of sense. That's something we probably should address as a council. Should we, should, when, when a, when a, a person is promoted, or gets a large increase, should there be a time period that kicks in to, to prevent this double dipping, I guess is the way, best way to refer to it. Just a thought, I was thinking about that when I was reading the notes today, and it, it seems like that would be the simplest way to, to solve the problem, is just to put some kinda barrier or time limit there before the next raise could be given.
Jay?
So, um, again, I, I know very little about this, I read the budget, and the city manager and I exchanged an email about the general subject. I would think that it would be, you know, your budget process is starting tonight, right? This is the introduction, so you're gonna have a public hearing, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a whole bunch of stuff happening. So, I would think that the safest course of action would be to have a closed session at some future time, even after Monday's meeting, where we can talk about whatever it is that's on your mind, because it's dealing with specific individuals, and we're allowed to talk about compensation of specific individuals in closed session, and that way we can at least get the issues out on the table, so we all understand what they are. And then we still have several weeks to address how we wanna deal with this in your budget type of situation. So, that would be the safest route, is to accommodate everybody's needs, dealing with the specifics, and then deal with the general policies.
Well, I kinda think that we've, if it's covered in the budget, the way it's, budget is written. Well, I kind of think that we've, if it's covered in the budget the way its budget is written, and, and the blanket increases are covered in the budget, and we're talking about specifics as to whether or not certain individuals would get the, would get the blanket increase, I don't know if that's a, that's not really a budgetary matter, that's a personnel matter, in my thinking.
Right, that's what I said. If we're going to talk about certain individuals. I mean, if you start from ground zero, the charter says that the council is in charge of setting the salaries and the things related to salaries. So we know that. And now we want to talk about specific employees that have been affected by increases within the last whenever. So we should be talking about that in closed session. We can talk about what Councilman McCarron was saying about how do you do a generalized policy? We can talk about that at a later date. That doesn't need to be in a closed session.
Okay.
Should I get a consensus for closed session then?
Yeah.
Jim, if we can, make sure we get it added to Monday's meeting.
Any further comments, questions, concerns relating to the operating budget? Next up, we have ordinance 02-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 water and sewer rate. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
We're holding the line, correct?
I, I had something that, that came up. There are a chain of emails during the past month. Citizen wrote in, was objecting to the service fee we charged when they paid their water bill on, or water and sewer bill online. And that, that really is a aggravation. I sympathize 100% with that individual, but I understand 100% why we do it. Because, because we're charged that fee, we've got to pass it on. So my thought was, is there a way that we could come up with a total, a total amount that we have collected from people paying their water bills online? In other words, if we, if we had a dollar figure that said, over the course of the last year, we collected $2,513.48 in, in, in service fees for people paying their water bill over line. And that represented 36 individuals. And, or whatever. And then we, then we, then we thought about it. I thought about it a little more. We could, we could determine whether or not, I guess the juice is worth the squeeze. I mean, the, the irritation factor of having to pay a fee when you, when you want to give somebody money is pretty high. I, I sympathize 100% with this lady. It's, we use the example of, of buying sports tickets or, or movie tickets and always have a service fee from, from StubHub or, or,
Ticketmaster.
whatever the movie people are. If, if it's not a whole lot of money, if it's just a few dollars, then maybe it's not even worth talking about. Maybe we could absorb it. On the other hand, if it's a large amount of money, and it requires us to raise the water fees or water and sewer fees, then that's a whole nother matter. And I, I just was curious if we have that kind of information available.
Jim, we, we went through the scenario a bit back. Do you remember the approximate number that we came back with?
I don't remember the number of people that have made credit card payments. I, I think we need to be careful here about the, the terms that we use and about the process. The city doesn't collect that 3%. That is a third-party processor. The city doesn't pick that processor. That processor's agreement is with the company that provides our water and sewer billing software. So we don't have any choice in the matter for that other than shopping for a new software provider, which we really have no interest in doing right now, because we're happy with it, it works well. But yes, there's a 3% charge that their vendor charges to use a credit card. My understanding, having talked with other city managers around the county is, and, and actually outside of the county with, with other utilities, that 3% is not at all uncommon for use of a credit card with, with water bill payments. I, I go to some retail stores, and if I use a credit card, I pay 3% more than I do if I pay cash. So it's not an unusual charge, you know, especially for a, I guess, a lower transaction kind of business. If we, if we had hundreds of thousands of transactions a year, maybe we could negotiate with the card processor for a lower fee. But obviously, they need to make their money as well. So I, I just want to be clear that the city is not collecting 3% from people. That, that's beyond us. We don't see that money. And we don't choose the card processor either. We have had conversations with entities who were trying to get our business to get us to use their card processing services. And when we said, oh, well, if you can do better than 3%, maybe we, you know, can talk a little bit more. And it never goes any farther than that. So, you know.
Yeah, those costs are pretty standard industry-wise.
The anecdotal evidence we have tells us that 3% is pretty standard. But I just want to be clear that the city is not charging extra for that. That's an outside processor that we don't pick.
Well, it's not like that's the only option to pay.
And, right.
You can write a check, you can send it in the mail, you can use your bill pay through your bank.
Most banks, right, most banks currently have the option to do, you know, a bill pay, you know, through their app. So whether it's, whether it's Truist, PNC, you know, M&amp;T, whomever, you know, I, I mean, we do it for our water bill. Now, it does generate a physical check that comes to the city. But for me, I go, you know, I go on the app. Okay, my wife goes on the app. And, you know, and, and we don't, we don't write a check, we don't use a stamp. And, you know, and we can say when it's supposed to come out, and, you know, and it's, it's pretty darn easy. You know, but again, that's through the bank app and not the city app.
The only, the only, okay, good, Jim, sorry.
One other thing that came to mind, and I was thinking about this. What about Zelle or Venmo or something like that? Is that, could that be used like this?
I think I brought that up to Barry once, and she said it, it's not a viable option.
Can't do that?
No. No.
Zelle is kind of like the.
Just, just trying to solve a problem, but.
Pure to pure kind of stuff.
Yeah, Zelle is more, is more like what you do with your bank, almost.
Already.
You know, Venmo is a little bit different. And I can see why Barry would think that that wouldn't be workable in our circumstance.
We do get our water bills a month in advance. So I mean, that gives you a whole month to.
My only, the only thing I would raise is that I'm sure that there are, that there are people out there who need to pay their water bill with a credit card, as opposed to having the cash to pay the bill. And the question is, you know, you got people who are, who, who are having to use something that may require a finance charge, and then we're putting a service charge on top of it. So I think that there is a kind of an equity piece to this that maybe we ought to look at. But I think the first question, like, like I said, was, was how big is this actual problem? Is it actually, is it actually a problem?
It'd be interesting to know that.
Yeah. I think that's the, that would be a good answer to get for Monday. If you could get us an answer for Monday, I'd like that.
Yeah, number of people using it, Jim, and the amount that we collect from it. Okay.
Any further comments, questions, concerns regarding water and sewer rate?
Nope.
Hearing none, proceeding down to ordinance 03-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 tax rate. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I am proceeding down to resolution, under adoption resolution 2024-06 water allocation for April. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
I have a question. Recovery 180. Is this for the smaller treatment building next door? Or is this for the residential building?
That's for the residential building.
Why are we only charging them one?
They.
They're putting 42 people in there.
So they came.
Where they say that they.
On their, on their site plan, it was just one EDU, because they're not, they're not doing standard dwelling units. So much like we did with an assisted living facility, there was like a gallons per day, per individual calculation that was done, worked through with planning and zoning. And that's what it, what it came down to. Now, keep in mind, the former use of the property was, I believe, seven apartment dwellings. So they already had a fairly large number of EDUs attributable to the, the former use.
I, I thought I had asked that question once before, and I, I, I think I was told that there was only one meter there at the time.
Right, and I'm not saying there were seven connections, but their, their demand was, was equated to seven apartment dwellings.
So they were already billed for a demand that added up to more than one? And so this would be one additional on top of what they were already?
So they were, they were viewed as being seven dwelling units, as seven, and I'm.
I think it's six, but.
However many apartments were in there, they were, they were viewed as having that many EDUs. So just like if, if you had a parcel that had a semi-detached dwelling on it, and that was demolished, and something was replacing it, that parcel would have two EDUs or 500 gallons per day attributable to it. So if something came in to replace it that used another 250, they would have to pay for one more benefit assessment, one more water unit.
Right, so, so this essentially is one additional on top of what they were presumed to have already had.
On top of what the apartment use would have been allocated.
Okay.
All good?
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine with that explanation.
Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Hearing none, proceeding forward. City manager report?
Okay. Not a whole lot of updates on the capital projects and such. Let's see, city attorney's working on the deeds of easement for the Griffles Lane Storm Drain. And he's pointed out a couple shortcomings in the easement plat as it's drafted. So working with the surveyor on getting those fixed up. Design work continues on the sewer rehab projects for this year. I did want to add, put something on your, on your minds. Maybe we can talk about this a little more Monday night. Our information technology department is not a department. And I think it's time that we, that we consider that its own department. Right now, it's, it's just structured as reporting to the city manager. But our IT specialist does not consider the department head, even though he is a supervisor. So I would like to see if there's any interest in or support to update the code that would recognize IT as its own department. And along with that, move our IT specialist from an hourly position to a salaried position. And budget-wise, that would really just be looking at what we're projecting for that individual for salary, for, you know, hourly plus overtime. And, and then seeing what that total would be, and marrying it up to the closest, closest figure on the pay scale chart. So budget-wise, very minimal impact to, you know, to making the change. But I think it would give the, some well-deserved recognition to our IT specialist. And, and also, really, it should be its own department at this point. And I think we're, as we rely more and more on technology, and, and every department is using more and more of it, you know, that department is likely to grow in the future. And we have other departments of one person that aren't supervisors, who are department heads. So I think this is something that, I think the time has come that we need to move ahead with that. So please give it some thought. And, you know, it's not something that we have to do tomorrow. It would take a, a code amendment to do it, because we do spell out, you know.
It is code, not charter, right?
So I would need to look to see if it's both.
We talked about that the other day.
I think the list is in code.
I think.
Because there's, there's like, there's like a little, there's a little list, and that's in code.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we certainly will do that, that research and make sure that we're addressing it properly, whether it be in one, the other, or both. But please give it some thought, and we can maybe talk a little bit more Monday night, see if anybody's interested in moving ahead with that. Let's see. I did want to note, since we've been introducing the budget here and talked about the budget recently, I think there's often a, a misperception about what individuals pay in city taxes. So I just wanted to point out that our rate is 37 cents per hundred. So just by way of an example, a house appraised at 300, or a property appraised at $300,000 is $1,110 in, in tax. So I often hear from people that, well, I pay $4,000 in, in city taxes. Well, you, you may pay $4,000 in real estate tax, but it's not all coming to the city. A lot of that goes to the county. So I just wanted to highlight that, because we are talking about the budget and the tax rate. And there does seem to be the, the misperception when people look at their tax bill and, and see what's going to local, and they think that that's all city, perhaps, or what their escrow is paying out. So I thought that, that example might be helpful for folks to kind of put things in perspective a little bit. And really, I don't have much more unless anybody has questions.
Now, that's a pretty important distinction to bring up, especially as the county talks about their tax situation and budget situation, so.
Yeah, their tax increases, I think, coming from the county, so.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Oh, one, one last thing. Dan, if I can share my screen for a second?
Just did.
Just did.
Okay. Thank, wow, okay. So we talked about the DPW building and some of the, that we store equipment in the, the old treatment plant. So.
Somewhere under that.
That's, that's the driveway to the, to the building where our jetter is stored, as well as our sewer truck that we use as a back truck. So, and oftentimes, when there's a backup, it's exacerbated by wet weather flows. So those are the times that we need to get that equipment. And just let me see if I can find this quickly.
I like the little bridge there. Looks like something Indiana Jones should be crossing.
So this is, this is that entrance this morning. Oh, great. So just a quick video from the surveillance cameras that are out at the old treatment plant. So that you can see where the driveway and the gate is. So that's, that's this morning. We haven't had torrential rains or anything like that. You know, so that's what we would have to cross to get that equipment out of the building where it's stored right now. And the other picture is just one that the guys at the treatment plant took on a different occasion when we did have, have higher rains. But you can see in, in the other photo that the water was up to the bottom of that pedestrian bridge. Which, by the way, is a little, a little, a little creepy to cross, by the way. It's, it's not the most comforting thing. I'm sure the guys are braver than I am about it, but anyhow, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, that's, that's where we have to access our equipment. And Dan, thanks for sharing the screen. We can go back to normal.
That's all you had, right, for department reports as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, I go back, I'd like to go back quickly to the question that I asked earlier when Randy was sitting at the table about the project restore grant. You know, I, on the, on, on the economic development report, it says, "Applied for Project Restore 2.0," past tense. And I'd still want to know how that has been applied for when that application is supposed to come from a Main Street organization, when the Main Street board knew nothing about it.
I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I don't understand what, why it matters how we get the money. If, once it gets here, then they have a discussion about how it gets used.
I'm not sure that that's.
Because there's very specific things that that grant can be used for. So obviously.
It's actually, this, in, in this particular case, this is a very broad grant that could go to a lot of things for a lot of, a lot of businesses.
Well, it says whose purpose is to reactivate vacant storefronts.
Yes.
To me, that's very narrow.
These stores are very narrow.
It's narrow.
Well, I, how do you define, you know, the defined vacant, you know, I mean, you know, one, one, one York street is vacant, but somebody rents it and is doing something, starting to, you know, trying to work, work on it and do something with it. Right across the way here, the, this, you know, building that's been sitting there for 20 years, has anyone contacted that owner and said, "Hey, is there grant money available?"
Yes, they have, yes. Yes and yes, lots and lots and lots of yes times, yes.
And I, and I think then, like you said, that's the conversation that needs to happen, right? Once the money is here.
I thought that once the money got in, then it would be a conversation that was brought to you.
I'm not sure, cause it's not really clear to me, I mean, I've read, I've read a lot of the paperwork. You know, I mean, can we just flat out apply for $300,000, which is the maximum grant, and then determine how to?
That's my understanding is that we didn't get it and then dispersed.
Yeah, and this, and this may help. I'm, I'm right on the Project Restore 2.0 page for DHCD. And it says, "Who can apply?" So place-based economic development organizations can apply to receive funds to activate vacant buildings in the jurisdiction they serve. So it says that organizations if awarded will sub-grant the funds to for-profit businesses, nonprofit organizations, cooperatively owned businesses, and social enterprises to start up or expand to vacant buildings. So the only people not eligible to apply were small businesses.
Right, because they're separate.
But it looks like it was through the purview of economic development. So we talked about this a little bit earlier, and it's separating economic development from Main Street manager in those two positions.
But that doesn't mean they both then constitute and say
Right, Jamie, she does, yeah, he does both of those things, but this isn't, this does not scream to me that it's tied so much to Main Street with the exception of, there's a lot of vacancy on Main Street, which is where it's, yeah, which is where it's
It goes all the way down to Broad Street as far as qualifications go, cause it go, it, there's a map for it.
So, and the grant I know was turned in, I want to say it was a, give or take, it was a week ago. That was my understanding, and that wasn't the deadline necessarily.
Deadline's not for another three weeks.
Yeah, the earlier you got it turned in, um, Project Restore 2.0 was reviewing the grant applications this year as they were submitted. Whereas in years past, they waited until everything was submitted past the deadline, and then they reviewed each of them individually. So this time, it was, it was of the benefit to the city that the earlier they can turn it in, the earlier they would be reviewed and considered.
And that's my understanding, is you get a pot, and then like you said, it gets sub-granted out, I guess.
Right, and then vacant buildings being the priority for this, well, the restriction, I'll say.
Yes, it has to go to something, right. And then, of course, right, also, how do you define vacant? You know, I mean, really, the only vacant building that I know of is the one across the street now.
Vacant was defined as having no tenant in its, or leases signed prior to the submission of the grant.
Right.
Once the grant was submitted, that is the date in which DHCD will use for Tawny Town specifically to go forward and process their applications.
So if there is a less C, even though there isn't an open business, if there's a less C, then you're already, that, that property's not eligible.
That's accurate.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, okay, that's fine.
All good?
Yep.
Just with regard to applying for, for grants, there, there is a, yeah, some risk that we may be awarded funds and not be able to spend them. And, and we've, we've run into that with, with monies that we had targeted for facade improvements, where, you know, the state was very lenient and accommodating and letting us extend and, um, you know, use that money years after it was first awarded because we had difficulty getting interest in people using that money because of the limitations or the requirements of the Maryland Historic Trust. That we had people who might want to make improvements, but they didn't want to do it the way the Maryland Historic Trust wanted them to do it. So we would sit on that money and, and, you know, we have run into, you know, risks.
In the past, most of those were reimbursement grants, meaning you had to spend the money upfront, and maybe you got all the back, maybe you only got half of the back. Where this is a different story, this is money, upfront money being granted out.
But as, as, right, as the chairwoman said, this, this one, the timing of it was, was very critical because they were reviewing as, as received, so.
Everybody had to be asking for their, their grant.
So we, we wanted to get in there as quickly as we could, so.
Be following it.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council on city manager and department reports?
I have a department report question. It's from, it's from the Parks and Rec Department, we, Lorena makes a comment that, um, there's going to be some pear trees that need to be removed from the park because Potomac Edison came in and, um, basically destroyed them.
They were an invasive species. They are like a wild pear, they're invasive. So they're not good trees to begin with.
I mean, this could be a huge amount of money if they're the ones I'm thinking about, they're big trees.
Which ones are you thinking about?
I was thinking of those Bartlett pears that are down there.
I don't think they're Bartlett pears.
All right, that's the question I was going to ask.
Yeah.
I just, I was thinking of
The Bradford pears are considered an invasion species.
I mean, the Bradford pears.
Yeah, and they can get the fairly largest trees, but that doesn't make them any less invasive, they are an invasive species.
Well, I, I guess the point that I was trying to make is,
Right.
if indeed these were planted and not just popped up and grew, or even if they did, if the power company came in and, and destroyed them just to the point where we have to take them down, why does the power company help us take them down?
Because that's what the power company does. Have you ever gone down the street after they trimmed those trees and they look awful?
I know that, but I, I agree with that.
Right, it's not, they don't do it.
That's in city right of ways and so forth, but
Right, but I think that the trees probably had some issues to begin with, um, health-wise.
They get problematic when they get that big.
Right, so the, as soon as they trimmed them, I think it was more about, we recognized that there were some issues that were going to be long-term, so she thought maybe we should jump on it now while they're already trimmed back so well.
Then they're easier to take down.
I'm just, I'm just, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, and I can tell, and I'll check with Lorena too. Yeah, and I'll let you know.
If they're the ones I'm thinking about, they're going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars to take out.
No, it shouldn't be that much, I have a chainsaw. No, I'm just
The other question I had was, uh, her comment on Flickinger Park, that the prop, it was improperly graded by the developer, I'm not sure that that's, I mean, why did she say that? Is that true? Is, I mean, I, why would we accept a park that was improperly graded? Doesn't make sense.
And it, at this point, I don't think we can really tell if it was properly graded or not, you know, 25 years ago, but, but it's
It needs to be fixed, whatever, right.
But the
But that statement got me, that's all.
The water's not making it to the inlet because of either settling or, you know, that it, that it, and that this unfortunately happens all around town. You know, ground settles, somebody might alter one yard a little bit, and it has an impact on another yard, and then folks come to the city because they have a, a low spot in their backyard that they want to, you know, hold the city or the builder responsible for 10 years after the house was built. And, and it, it may have, and again, this, this, I mean, this part goes back to my time on council, so it's been around for, you know, probably 20 years.
You're right, I could, it goes back to my time on the council, I mean, it's so, the city, the city has drainage problems, and always has and always will. And it's just simply because of the clay that were built upon.
Yeah.
But I, my concern was, if indeed it was, it was something that the contractor failed or developer failed to do, then maybe we have some recourse with the developer. But I don't know how at this stage you'd ever go back and prove that.
At, at this stage, I don't think we would, and, you know, Lorena maybe, may have based her comments on what she has heard perhaps from Public Works employees who may have commented that it never drained properly or something like that. But that, you know, if that, yeah, if that was the case, and, and again, keep in mind, that also was an era where the city did not have construction inspectors regularly when subdivisions were being built. So there are, there have been instances where we have found years later that things weren't built quite according to plan. You know, and, and Copperfield is, is one of those subdivisions in particular that you look at the plans and it's like, well, why isn't there reinforced concrete pipe out there? There's corrugated metal, that's not supposed to be what's out there. But when it was built in the 90s, the city didn't, you know, have inspectors out there keeping an eye on it, so.
That doesn't, that doesn't surprise me because, oh, never mind.
But
Can I, before you move on, can I share a piece of good news? Because I saw in Lorena's report that she thanked you three for reading the "If I Were Mayor" essays. A student from Runnymede did win. She is a fourth grader at Runnymede, she is headed to Annapolis on April 26th to meet the governor and get a citation and get her cash prize, and she is thrilled and pumped, and her essay was awesome, so hopefully I can get my hands on it and share it with you all. But, yeah, so that's very exciting.
Come to the chambers.
I'm sure that she would love to come and read it.
Also, absolutely.
She's a spunky girl, I'm sure she would love to come read it.
Some of the town, in addition to that, the city council has their little celebration for.
Okay, nice.
So I think maybe we should do that.
I think we should do it, since it's a Tawny Town kiddo, it's huge.
Because I've been on that committee forever.
Yeah.
And nobody from Tawny Town has ever won.
Well, she is like over the moon, beyond thrilled, yep.
Ever, so we need to do something.
Yeah, good news is always good to share. So speaking of good news, I also wanted to, while I happen to be sitting here looking at the charts, a shout out to DPW for the excellent start to the year in terms of our nutrient loading out of the wastewater treatment plant. The, that, the graphs look fabulous. As fabulous as graphs can look.
Oh, just one last thing on those pear trees, the Public Works Director just texted me that Public, DPW's going to take them down themselves, so they're not lar, so large that we can't do it ourselves. And that part of it is because they're directly, that they're, they're
Makes me feel a lot better.
And also they're directly under the power line.
I was just completely off, I don't, I just, I just imagine the worst, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Comments, questions, concerns regarding city manager reports, department reports? You can coordinate with Lorena and Councilmember Chaney. Beth, would you be a good contact to try to coordinate that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Maybe like May, May Council workshop, give her like some time, you know. Plus by then she'll have her award, so.
True.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, heading down to legal report, Jay.
Good evening, everybody. As you will see under your new business items four, five, and six, we've been working with those all month. They're all good to go, when you get to those, I'm sure the city manager can explain. The biggest priority was to get the EVACCO project out of the door and make sure that they can move ahead. It really has two phases as far as EVACCO, as I'm concerned. First of all, we're dealing with the PWA for the office, the expansion. But there is also a Board of Zoning Appeals for the off-site parking that we're trying to schedule. So Clara's been working on trying to do that. It's very difficult with a member down on the Board of Zoning Appeals because we need them all, and so it becomes a very challenging issue. So you might want to think about that as we move forward to make sure our boards are stacked because it affects people, like EVACCO, so they're looking at possibly putting things off till May, well, when that happens. So those are related to your items of new business. The other thing, and I have a handout in front of you that Clara put there, the things we've been dealing with is the holdovers of the Public Information Act requests. And I have a chart that you should be looking at. You have to realize the scope of these requests and the time it takes for us to deal with these issues. In front of you is the chart of just the ones that have happened within the last six months. And you can see there's six from Ava Miller, three from Brad Wans, three from David Bowie. There's 14 in total. And the reality of all of this is that the Public Information Act is basically being used as a weapon. It is used as a way to get information that can be used, and then the next person wants to get information that they've used, and it goes on and goes on. And while we're compliant with the law and trying to make sure we follow that, the implications to the city are that if you just take all of those 14 and you take the two hours that people get for free to each one, that's 28 hours of time that the city has had to put into this. And, you know, you don't have a big staff, so you're basically dealing Clara and Dan Dennis to get these things, and it has taken hours to deal with all of these. So I wanted you to be aware of that because, as you can see, some of these are still pending. Some of them still need to be reviewed because certain things were given out that shouldn't have been given out. And so one of the things that came from your special counsel opinion that was shared with everyone, I believe, a few weeks ago, I hope you read through that, is that we really need to give Clara some policy about how she, as the custodian of the records, because you remember you did that in ordinance number 2318, is supposed to handle these things because she is basically the custodian. So on Monday, I'm going to have some bullet points that I'm going to work out with Clara and inform you all of how we're going to handle things internally so that we can deal with this efficiently and deal with this fairly, but also make sure that there isn't any outside interference in what has to happen because that slows it down and it also affects it. So that is something that we can talk about more under the legal report on Monday, but I wanted you at least to be aware that that is the situation as we face today. And the question that I had when I talked to Clara is, let's put that in context, 14, that seems to be a lot to me. So I asked her, what did we have last year? For the entire year, we had 13. This year, since 2024 began, we've had 19. So you can see that it is really, uh, you know, again, this is in the state law, it's something people are allowed to do. But the purposes behind this are, are questionable sometimes. And the impact on that is Dan Dennis can't do what Dan Dennis is supposed to do. Clara can't do what she's supposed to do. And then, of course, you pay me to be reviewing all of this. So maybe there is a plea that you can talk to, if you know these people, to say, hey, maybe this isn't the best way to go about getting this information for the city, and there's other ways to do it. So I'll have more for you that on Monday.
Thank you.
Sounds good, Jay, thank you. Next up, we have new business, monthly financial report, questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing none, proceeding down to council payables, questions, comments, concerns by council. Hearing none, proceeding down to Department of Public Works Building Step Two. Jim, do you want to lead off on it?
So this will be to, there we go, I actually got the right page. To continue the, the process for the Public Works Building with, with the actual construction package plan or the construction plans. The sum for this, as well as the, um, the site design, the site plan work, is $331,708. So we are looking for approval to move forward with that to get the, um, the construction drawings for the building done and the site development plan done. So that'll encompass, um, the, the stormwater management and so on, the geotechnical work and everything for the site plan. So just to put that in perspective a little bit, let's see, when we did the E and R upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant in 2008, we paid $495,000 for the, the design work on that. And the dewatering construction services that, that, that project is ongoing right now ended up being $417,000 for engineering. And that, now that involves a little bit of, you know, underground piping for the sludge to be moved over to the new building. But it's essentially, you know, a modest amount of stormwater, a, a small prefab building, and then the control system for the pump, or for the, the press, rather. So I just thought those examples might help put things in perspective for the cost of, of the engineering that we encounter these days. So that's, um, that's going to be on for approval hopefully Monday night. The proposal is in the packet. And also, if we do continue forward and, and do agree to have Morton construct the building, then that amount would come off of the, the total cost of the building. So just keep that in mind as well.
Questions, comments, concerns by council?
No, it's very reasonable.
None, listen.
The project cost is very, very reasonable.
No, listen, yeah, listen. Questions, comments, concerns? Sounds good. We are heading down to approval of contract, dendum number three, Eckers Lawn Service LLC. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
So the, the exhibit in your packet, um, those red areas that are highlighted, there, there are basically areas along the path where trees had to be cleared in order to get the ADA, um, compliance slopes and cross slopes. So it turned out that we have more turf area than was originally anticipated. Um, and it's going to be simplest just to have Eckers add that on to our weekly mowing.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, proceeding forward, approval of fence installation agreement Ballinger Park and Perry property. Questions, comments, concerns?
So this is, um, in lieu of a, of trees?
So the city committed at one of our planning commission meetings to, um, to erect a fence on the park property, um, within the wooded area to kind of denote the, the boundary line or, you know, a do not cross.
Really, it's boundary demarcation, not screening.
Right. And, um, and we were also, we agreed to plant some additional trees where, where there were some sparse areas to again, try to create a little bit of, now that was for a little bit of a buffer. When public works went out to the site to start looking at how they would construct the fence and how they would get materials back there, um, it looked like it was going to be very difficult to, to build the fence in that environment. And also we didn't want to take down any trees to, to do that. So the idea came up of, well, maybe the neighbors would be agreeable to, instead of us putting it within the woods, to actually put it outside of the woods, do a nice straight fence that kind of, you know, indicates the property boundary, even though it's not going to be on the property boundary, uh, because one of the neighbors does own into the woods a bit. But the neighbors were agreeable to it and that's the agreement that's in your packet. Um, the city attorney has reviewed it. So basically by allowing us to erect the fence on their property, they're acknowledging that it will be their fence, they will be responsible for maintaining it, we're not liable for it, you know, for their use of the fence and, and so on. And that way it, for us, it, it saves us a lot of time and, and labor costs to just be able to go out there, use, use a post hole, you know, use an auger, get the fence up in a couple of days rather than trying to work through the woods and do it manually. So it works out well for us and the neighbors, um, are agreeable to the idea.
Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward, public works agreement for AVAPCO, third amended site plan. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward to public comment pertaining to agenda items. Any?
I've just been, I just have quick hits on some of the things because I've been back taking notes on some of them. On the, uh, just a, a comment on the, the merit pay versus, uh, versus the COLA, it seems like what's being argued is that if you get a merit pay increase, you forfeit your COLA, which is, that's, that's what's coming across.
They get both. They get a merit pay and a COLA.
Well, but everybody gets a COLA, some people get a merit. So that's.
Well, everybody gets a merit.
They're arguing specific positions that had received either, um, step increases or something of the sort, whether they should also still get that, their 3% merit pay and 3% COLA for the year, or that should be forfeited since they got step increases.
You, then you're cutting your, you're, you're cutting that step and, and you're cutting that, a lot out of that step. Anyway, it, it just seems like if you're going to do COLAs, you just do COLAs and if you're going to do merits, that's on top of whatever is going to be set up. Uh, on the water bill, uh, stuff, I pay by card because personally I haven't written a check in like four years. Um, and I pay the three bucks. Uh, I know a lot of people who don't pay by card because of the fee. Transitioning a little bit, uh, the app user experience to pay your water bill is terrible. It's, everything is jumbled up and you have to kind of half scroll and try and get the things and.
So just to clarify on the app part, sorry not to cut you off, but it, basically all it's doing is mirroring the website.
Which is what I was getting to. The website's not set up for mobile.
Yeah.
So if you've got, if the app is using the website for mo, for, to feed it pages, the website needs to be set up for mobile in order to format correctly. Cause I was just, I was just looking at the, uh, the webpage while I was in the back and I found it ironic that the banner that advertises to get the app is cut off because it's not formatted right for, for mobile. Um, uh, just on, on the flooding, yeah, it was flooded at Fort Meade today. We've had a crap ton of rain on top of saturated ground, so I was, I was driving through some heavy duty stuff to get, to get home. Uh, the power company kills private trees all the time. They, they give zero craps about what it does to your trees whenever they, they come out and, yeah, people get stuck with it all the time. I'm glad the DPW is going to be able to take it out and we don't have to, to spend, spend extra for it. Um, the, uh, on the, the info requests, uh, it sounded kind of prejudicial that, uh, that, that when, uh, when they were being spoken about, that they're being used for, for, as weapons. Um, it's not really up for judgment as to what it's getting used for. It's information requests. There just happens to be a lot of information requests because people are having, are asking a lot of questions now. And, uh, the, uh, the last one was, is there a way to distribute exhibits for public view? Um, cause there's a lot of times when we can't release, we, we never really know what is being voted on or anything else on, on some of it. Just, uh, just a curiosity.
Jim, do we put that on the agenda on the website?
So we have been putting, um, ordinances and resolutions and agreements. I believe we've been linking them to the agenda on the website. We've had some conversations recently about, because we've had requests for other information that's in the packet and we've, we've shared that. We've talked about putting the full packet out on the website.
With some redactions.
And, and it, right, if, if there's things that, you know, are designated for closed session or that are, are legal, you know, legal advice, et cetera, would, would be withheld. And we, we certainly can do that. I mean, every, basically most of what's, most of what's in your packet is available to the public if they were to put in a Public Information Act request. So that takes time, which I think was the point the city attorney was making is that while, yes, no one has to tell us why they want the information, if it's public, we provide it. And, you know, we have to do it within so many days, but the volume of requests that have been coming in that certainly appear to have other motives than simply desiring information are just requiring additional time. That's the point is that it's, it's being, becoming burdensome on city staff to keep fulfilling more and more of these requests. So circling back to the agenda and the exhibits, we could put them out so that people don't have to make requests to get them.
Right. I was gonna say, can we short circuit some of this by, by just publishing?
But then it.
I mean, Clara has to put it together anyway, uh, short of just going through and pulling out a few things that may need to be pulled out, just put it out.
For, for the packet?
I was gonna say, yeah, cause like an example tonight, it was, uh, it was, uh, need to, need to point to this exhibit and you'll see the red line here of this where it does that. And it's like, everybody back here is like, uh, okay. So.
I don't see any, because it's public information anyway, they could request it.
Right.
You know, if it, if it, if, if, if Clara's already putting it together to send to us, how hard is that then to just link, link up to the website?
I will say, just, just so you guys are aware, this is a printed version of the council packet.
It's a lot.
I mean, it's 95 pages.
That, that's why we don't have that all printed out.
Well, no, 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 and, and I get that and I wouldn't expect you to print it out, but I mean, a bunch of us can show up with iPads and, and, and scroll through.
And we, we've talked about providing it online because that is the, we could definitely kind of go to that format. It's just when we're talking about a big stack like this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause yeah, if, if, if I need it on paper, I can spend my, my money for 95 pages worth of, uh, worth of printout and my ink.
But it also might not be mobile friendly, as you alluded to before.
Well, but I was gonna say, but you can still, you can still zoom. But, uh, but yeah, but that, that, that was the big thing is I've, I've just noticed that at a few council meetings now where it's, it's either exhibits where maybe something gets shown on here, but we can't see it because the screens aren't big enough for the room. Um, or, or just, or just like tonight where they're just, was it, was this, oh, it's in your, it's in your packet and it's like, okay, so what is that?
So I, 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 I agree with you, Harry. I mean, many times I've sat, you know, in this council chamber, listened to what's going on.
I was gonna say.
What's in this packet?
I do AV for a living. That's why I like the things like, like the lenses and being cloudy, which apparently one of them is still cloudy.
It's still cloudy?
Yeah, this one.
That one?
Yeah. You were still in a fog.
I looked pretty good on the screen when it was on.
But, uh.
I may be in a fog anyway.
But yeah, but then the, this, just the screen size for legibility that I, I'm an engineer, it's what I do. So anyway, so that was it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
With, with that, you can let us know Monday night if you would like us to move in that direction, um, and make the packets available. You know, there may be some subtle changes in reports that are, um, you know, provided because now our audience is much broader, um, and.
Are you good if I get a consensus on that?
I think, I think that's, that's, that's fine.
I want to make sure everybody's, anybody have adamant opinions on that one way or the other?
And one of the, and one of the staff concerns has been that, and maybe more so mine, is that the more information that we push to the public, the more questions come back in about, and for example, having to explain, um, you know, for, for individuals maybe who have requested this information, well, how does, it basically explain what I'm looking at here because I don't get it. So with pushing more information out comes almost an implied obligation then because if we can't really say, well, we gave you the info, it's your job to figure it out. I mean, nobody's going to like that, right? So then we look like the bad guy. So that is, that is a potential consequence of pushing more information out is that it also takes more staff time then to explain what the council packet is all about. So that, and that's part of why I think historically it, it hasn't been, for one thing, there hasn't been that much of an interest, but in recent months, we've been getting more requests about it. So again, just like the Public Information Act request, there's an impact on staff with having to then, you know, field more calls and questions about the information. The more we push out, the more questions we get back and we're just, we're, we're just not that big of a staff to be able to accommodate all of this without something getting dropped.
Sorry, just one second.
I, I'll leave it.
Like you guys can go on. I just, I just gotta ask Jim something real quick. Jim, one question on, and I didn't think about it, when we were looking at the PIA requests, does that include the, like, non-formal ones that were carried out? For instance, you know, when council packets were being asked and stuff like that, because I know we, or the, I think it was the monthly financial report, for instance. I know we carried out a PIA similar to that where those.
Of those were counted in.
Yeah, I didn't, okay, I was just wondering.
It doesn't appear like they were.
Yeah, it didn't look like they were, but I know we have other ones besides just what was on that list.
We, we have, we receive emails to the info mailbox regularly. Um, sometimes they come directly to a, you know, one department or another, um, and we, you know, we can't force people to use the PIA form. If somebody emails, you know, asking for it, we need to provide it based on the email.
Okay.
And depending upon.
I just wasn't sure if you're keeping track of that or not in some form.
And, you know, it, it's not perfect because some are very easy to respond to, you know, we could, we could classify, you know, maybe more than we do as a public information request, but oftentimes if, if a department head can just fire off a response, you know, they'll do it and not route it through Clara and take up her time. So, yeah, I don't know that that number is perfectly accurate.
Okay. Apologies again.
That's okay. Um, I've been coming to the meetings and the last two to three meetings, I have heard you request that we make this information public, but we're kind of contradicting ourselves and being non-productive because now Clara's doing more work or others are doing more work when we've already made the comment, since we can't ask the question, to make the information public for the citizens of Tony Town. You know, we don't have many people here, so they're afraid to come here probably. I mean, it sounds to me like the people that are asking for the information are being personally attacked because you're saying, talk to them and tell them it's, you're, you're assuming why they're asking for the information. They want the information regardless. Again, you guys work for the citizens of Tony Town. Um, I can't express that more and we need to all incorporate, all of us in this information. Two more things. One, I know, I've been reviewing the charter and the codes, which is pretty interesting because it's, some of it's vague, some of it has good information, some of it is questionable. But, um, are we, shouldn't we all be present? And I'm speaking in reference to Galio, in reference to him being present here. He hasn't been present in some of the meetings. I'm just asking, is, do we have a policy for that? I see in the charter, it, we have to be present, meaning council, attorney, city managers. So to make sure it's fair that everybody is present. Secondly, our body language, meaning I'm sitting here, sometimes I'm frustrated and I really, I'd be tired from hearing what I'm hearing, but you guys are council people, you are leaders and your body language, we can see it. You might not can see it because you're not looking at yourself, but I do think it should be more respectful when we're up here talking and when you, someone is talking or if we're just here in general. I just think that should be something that goes with conduct, something that should be, um, addressed or something that should be, um, a line item for us to, for you guys to discuss later in your private sessions. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment pertaining to agenda items? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion on adjournment.
I'm moving, we adjourn.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I suppose. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.